Can you believe we're almost halfway done with November? All right, thank you Cheryl.
Thank you.
We'll move to item number eight, consider the extension agents' October report, request for reimbursement. Ms. Penny Behrens, five hundred twenty-nine dollars and thirty cents. Ms. Savannah Williams, six hundred and three, six hundred and three even. We have a motion to accept. Motion from Commissioner Wiley, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Shook, all in favor? Any opposed, motion passes five zero. We'll move to item number nine, discuss and consider employee bonds. Ms. Vanessa Correo, county attorney clerk, five thousand dollars. We have a motion from Commissioner Cresswell, do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Shook, all in favor? Any opposed, motion passes five zero. All right, let's move to item number five, discuss the October activity report for the jail and sheriff's office. Ms. Beverly?
I am. That took place. I have to be three people on Wednesday.
I believe that is addition plus subtraction. Not fires.
We're back up to twenty, no counting.
And the interesting thing is our next agenda item, Archer, Archer, Archer County wants to get involved?
Yes, we need to get involved with each other to be able to house when we have like a father-son. And I need to house them all together in the same jail, so I need somewhere close that I can be able to take them.
Is that happening more frequently?
Yes, they've already taken an inmate for me without a contract with this.
In the past, we've had three different relationships at the same time.
Uh huh. And it's all the same thing. This is something that sheriff has wanted to do. We had some issues with father-son dynamic duo, and he's like, no. Here's the one that the sheriff signed.
All right, do we have any questions for Beverly on the jail or sheriff's report? If not, we'll move to item number eleven, which is discuss and consider Archer County inmate contract. So, basically, this is contract between Young County and Archer County. Looks like it goes both ways, right?
Yes, sir.
So basically, either one of us will go with the daily rate of fifty dollars. Are we taking people from Archer County?
No, they're not.
So really, this is, we're the one asking.
Yes, sir.
This, this, this is our cheapest agreement. I think all of our other ones are at seventy, if I remember right.
They're sixty on Bayberry and Brockmore.
Is it sixty?
For Bayberry and Brockmore, it's seventy.
That's what we charge them, seventy-five per day. This is a contract for me to be able to send my inmates to another county.
Yeah.
The only one we had like that is Love County, and it's a lot more than that.
And it's just been a hell of a lot.
So, we're responsible for our transportation, they're responsible for their transportation. Each county is responsible for their own medical, it's pretty, this is a pretty fair, basic, normal contract.
I wonder if they get an energy rate on medical stuff?
We don't have dates on here.
We still have to go get them and bring them over.
That's perfect, and it'll be on time.
Yeah, yeah, any appointments they have, we have to go get them and bring them over.
Yeah, Randy signed it, their sheriff signed it, Travis has signed it. It's basically just set up as, they've left the contract period blank, and they've, they've left it kind of as an evergreen where any party can terminate the contract with thirty days' written notice. It looks good to me. Do we have a motion to accept this contract with Archer County?
I see here.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Wiley, we have a second from Commissioner Shook, all in favor? Any opposed, motion passes five zero. Thank you. All right, item number twelve, discuss and consider a request from the Graham Chamber of Commerce to close the inside of the square and all vehicles out by three P M. for the Christmas Stroll and Lighted Parade on Thursday, December fifth, twenty twenty-four. Eric, you kind of touched on this earlier.
Yes, sir, as I mentioned, we are kind of emphasizing safety for everyone this year, right? So in addition to around the square, just see the multiple, the first, second, third, fourth streets block it off, and then going all the way down to Grove, we'll still allow for until right before the parade, then they're lining up on West Street down there. So we're just asking Commissioners Court to allow us to close out the square for the parade, allow for pedestrian traffic through here.
Do we typically do that on Thursday, the Christmas stroll?
I don't remember, I don't think so, but it has been on Thursday since I've been here.
Okay. Timmy, we're gonna need to make a note that on December fifth, we're gonna need to send everyone the reminder to get the cars out. Okay, we have a motion to support, we have a motion from Commissioner Wiley, do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Shook, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed, motion passes five zero. It's always a really good time, and for those that haven't attended, it's, it's well worth attending. Let's move to item number thirteen, discuss and consider the Young County Arena Annual Financial Report for Fiscal Year Twenty-three, Twenty-four, and further authorize the county auditor to remit fourteen thousand eight hundred ninety dollars and fifty-five cents to the City of Graham based on an invoice for payment per section B two of the current lease agreement between the Young County Commissioners Court and the City of Graham. Ms. Gary?
Thank you, Judge. I prepared a presentation for the court. If you'd be here with me, I want to run through a couple of things that meet our requirements of the lease agreement. You have the packet there, it's in place. The first thing is the invoice. We are required to submit the, we are required to submit the invoice quarterly, and that satisfies the court's requirement. If you flip up to the next page, I have a packet there, that packet is provided to the auditor. The auditor will make that a part of the official financial record, which was another thing, we wanted greater transparency when we entered into the lease agreement. And so, the revenues and expenditures from the arena will be a part of the official financial record. Some of you like to look at the details, some of you like to say, tell me what the overall is, so I try to satisfy both of that in this report. Begin by looking at a summary that I think might be helpful, I just want to go over it just very briefly. Total revenues for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four for the arena were six hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars, six hundred and thirty-six cents. And then, we're trying to run it as a balanced fund, at least each year, and not show a deficit, so the expenses match that. On the revenue side, self-generated revenue was four hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, four hundred, four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars. Of that total revenues, the county subsidy totaled sixty-one thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars, that's including the almost fifteen thousand dollar invoice that was mentioned with the agenda item was called. The G I C subsidy was substantially more on the books at a hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars, but I do want to note that eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-six of that was due to a timing issue. G I C didn't pay for the previous fiscal year or to the new fiscal year, and that's the way that we have to book it, we don't book it back. So you can look at the difference in those two numbers and see what the G I C contribution is. On the total expenses there, that first line, materials, utilities, supplies, and repairs totaling three hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars. I want to emphasize, that's the cost of doing business. That is the cost of having an arena to do all the things that we want to do. That's what it, what it takes to keep it open, right? And that is the number one expense, and where most of the, most of the money's being spent. The second line item, we have to have the staff to provide the customer service to keep people coming to the arena for the events that generate that revenue. That number is one hundred and eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars. And then the third thing is, this is the main thing that's coming in, the fact that we're having to subsidize it. The arena's coming up on twenty years old, it's time to replace stuff, stuff breaks down. Just when you're running a business, anybody who runs a business, stuff doesn't last forever. That total for capital purchases and leases is a hundred and forty-four thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars. I also require a report to you what the cash on hand was at the conclusion of fiscal year. Cash on hand was sixty-six thousand, seventy-one dollars. So the arena does now have, which we didn't have before, since we're doing it this way, the arena has cash flow. Before, before I come back to you, say in January for the first quarter, we've got enough cash flow to keep us going until I come back. Hopefully, we won't have to, we'll have no money like we did last year, but I may have to come back to you in January, February, and say, we need that. We budgeted that in the county budget, and I appreciate that, and we're able to keep the arena running. I do want to hit some highlights. The arena covered sixty-nine percent of all its expenses with self-generated revenue. Sixty-nine percent they got from stall rental, arena rental, R V space rental, and then a couple of little things for Barclay rental and all of that. But those are the big three, sixty-nine percent. The landman filming, which is a highlight for us, that brought in twenty-one thousand, six hundred in arena rental revenue. The arena board themselves, and this was the board, they went out, shook hands, twisted arms, seventeen thousand, seven hundred dollars in sponsorship money, which is absolutely fantastic. For comparison, the arena had three hundred and fifty-six thousand in self-generated revenue last fiscal year. If you compare those two numbers, that's a thirty-one percent improvement. I just want to say, all those folks that might have said, oh, this lease agreement, it won't change anything, that was different, no, it's completely different. It's been a huge turnaround for the arena. The arena has been booked almost every weekend in twenty twenty-four thus far. I do want to hit on staff for a minute and ask Tony to come up here. The arena staff has three full-time positions and one part-time position, I gotta ask a question about that, highly staff. The arena staff has done a great job, and after all this success, Tony is gonna be resigning her position.
Can we boo this? I'd like to boo.
Tony, would you like to explain that it's not the city manager that are like, why you're leaving?
That's what I told him. No, I'm just kidding, he's been great. I do want to compliment the way that it has gone since we have merged. There may have been some discussion and some question of how it would go, but on my end, it's been wonderful. I've had the most support I've had the almost six years I've been here. We've made faster progress than we have this entire time, so that has nothing to do with why I'm leaving. Basically, my life schedule and my work schedule are very difficult to continue to maintain with a daughter who's about to go into high school, and I don't want to miss out on anything, and the arena's a very demanding schedule, and I don't want to whack in either department, so I keep my daughter. So, but it's, it's been so supportive these last couple of years that we have, everybody merged. And I wish that could have happened earlier, but I hope it continues to go that direction, because it'll be for the good of the arena.
Thank you for everything you've done.
Absolutely, thank you everyone for their support, because it's not just a me thing, it takes everybody.
I don't know if there's a chance to talk to Gable around the fall, because I need to appropriate. On that, step through a minute, I may need to sum up on the good news of my items, Tony. On that, because you've got an active dedicated arena board, they jumped right on it. Tony helped us out, we put out an advertisement, I got one more in this morning, Commissioner Wiley. We've already got four applications, and the arena board meets tomorrow. And we'll be looking at those applications, so once again, the arena board has jumped right on. Can't, the light that it happens, can't help that it happens, but they're making the transition, they're just doing.
Speaking of the arena board, have y'all replaced Grant on the arena board?
Yes, if you got a copy of the paper this morning, we've named a new assistant city manager, her name is Melinda Brown. She can't start until January seventh, but arena board said that they were okay with, you know, that's on the three-city side, and the city was okay with it. She'll be the G I C rep on the arena board, because they did the other half. Looking back to your summary report, just want to mention, some of the key capital improvements included the reutilization of forty stalls and the purchase of a back truck for stall maintenance. I do want to emphasize that on the stalls, right? Arena board took a hard look at their capital improvement plan, I'm waiting on to talk to them, we gotta tweak some numbers to come back to Commissioners Court with a revised capital improvement plan. They're putting more money towards stall improvements with stall max. The number one revenue producer at the arena is stalling. Is that right, Tony?
Yes.
Now, what's your think about that? Your board is treating this place like a business. They're making the capital investments in the biggest revenue producer. Anyone who wants to be critical of that, I want to emphasize that, that that board is running the arena like a business and spending the money for it to generate revenue. That's huge, and I think that's very important. Many thanks to our outstanding arena board directors, we'll see a few more names in there, because we had some people rotate out here in the year, like Commissioner Wiley, Commissioner Rogers, Randy Kent, Matt Dickie, Kirk Crago, Jeff Gough, Shannon Fleming-Potts, and Granny. We really appreciate all their leadership this year. Any questions on the summary report? The detailed report is on the back, I highlighted a couple of things for you. There you see in yellow on the revenue side, which is the upper portion there, that's the total arena support that you see there, totally just short of around two hundred thousand dollars, that's how we get the sixty-nine percent figure. Already mentioned, six hundred and forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars in total revenue. One of the things that I did want to talk to you about, I meant to highlight it here, but I didn't, I just want to talk about shavings. If you look at shavings, right, for shavings fees there, that's down about two-thirds of the way down at account number twenty-three dot four six zero two six. You'll see the number there, that we got in revenue, that's from sales of the shavings, is just over sixty-seven thousand dollars. If you look in the expenses, which is about three-quarters of the way down on the expenses at account number twenty-three dot nine thousand, twenty twenty-six, you'll see the expenses there totaled almost seventy-seven thousand dollars. That's about a ten thousand dollar disconnect. What I want to mention to you is, Tony's said this to me several times. She gets so many folks that show up that want to buy shavings there because it's convenient, she has to keep a stock on hand. And we made a really good deal right before the end of fiscal year, that prices have been high, prices went down. Tony, being the business manager, got on that deal and went ahead and stocked up on it. So when you either run a business, you know, you're carrying inventory, right? Those shavings are sitting in there unsold, that's what we bought, and that's, and that's what you're seeing on the expense side. But they're managing effectively, the board, about every other meeting, we talk about the shaving price, we see what we're buying it for. We do make a little bit on it, but on this report, it looks like it's upside down, and that's why, does that make sense there?
And that surplus that we ordered at the end of the budget year was gone two weeks later because of the show we had coming in the first week of the new budget year. So we had to have it on hand, we had to buy that extra book.
So I put the percentages out there, the budget versus actual, any of those jump out at you, the two-page detailed report? Any questions on it, Commissioner Rogers? We tried, we tried to be transparent about it, we missed a couple, we missed a couple, like fuel, you know, y'all have been on fuel prices. The fuel prices fluctuated, we didn't quite budget it up there, but we came pretty close to the overall. Okay, looking on that second page of the detail, so here's the way it breaks down. For the year, the arena showed a deficit of twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars. When I looked at, back at the records, as far back as I can go, that's the smallest deficit the arena has handled, from what I have for records. So if you see there, that's where I come up with that invoice on the first page, that's covering that deficit for the year, that fourteen thousand, eight ninety-one, okay? The total subsidy, the total amount of subsidy between the county and the G I C for the arena for this fiscal year, it's worked out like this, but two hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars, which represents the arena's sixty-nine percent subsidy. I hope this report has been detailed enough for the Commissioners Court. And what we'd like to hear, if we can, if you're in favor of it, we need a motion to approve the financial report for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, and allow dispersal of the invoice as presented.
I think we can do that in one, that's how it was presented in our agenda. So do we have a motion to approve the financial report and to approve the invoice for our half of the deficit, which is fourteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars and fifty-five cents? So I moved, second. Motion from Commissioner Cresswell, second from Commissioner Shook, all in favor? Any opposed, motion passes five zero. Thank you so much, Tony, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank y'all very much, I really do appreciate everything.
I'd just like to publicly recognize Eric for all his hard work on this. Twisting the numbers, pencil whipping the numbers, working on it, to make it work, but his financial statement is, is a my stuff compared to what I had from the past, which was terrific.
As much anxiety as there was about that arena and how to maintain it and how to keep it going forward, it seems like we've really settled on a, on a mini partnership to keep a wonderful asset for the community, because it really is a wonderful asset.
And I will argue that, you know, it is maybe one of the, if not the only thing, that brings people to town every single weekend, year-round, year.
We've got toughs there, two weeks, though.
Yes, everybody has their tickets, right?
How is, is that, are we doing well on ticket sales?
There are still, there are still prime seats available.
Prime seats available?
Well, sponsors.
Don't tell me donations seats in court?
No.
Locks off the sales.
You need to buy. Just because it's related, we'll, we'll go to the ten A M. in just one second. Item number fourteen, discuss and consider a nomination for the Young County Arena Board. Shannon Fleming-Potts is resigning from the board, is she done already?
It's November first, it's her.
Gotcha. So, we have a spot, a county spot to nominate?
I've checked with another person, and she thought about it, and she has young kids, she's getting to school.
Yeah.
But we're still looking.
Okay.
Dancy Creel, and she said she would serve if we need her. I talked to Jamie too, I, I talked to Dancy, she got returned the call. Dancy returned my call this morning, she said, yes, she would be willing to be on. And so, I would make a nomination for Dancy, she's got young kids on it, she's active with four H and.
She's frozen in her life, she's in life, so I think she has lots to do with the current leader, four H.
That's great.
And Dancy said she would be willing to serve this morning, I talked to her.
Okay, so we have a motion from Commissioner Cresswell, do we have a second?
Oh, second.
Second from Commissioner Wiley, any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero, we have filled our spot. That's good, that, she'll be great, that's a great choice.
Well, the other one I had, that he said no to me this morning, was Peacock. Dalton, I tried to give him.
He would have been good. Maybe, he's, he's young, maybe we can get him back at another time. All right, let's move to item number fifteen, which is a ten A M. discuss and consider bids on gov deals for the sale of a two thousand and eleven Skid Sphere and a two thousand and eleven Jura, Jura Patcher?
Jura Patcher, and three of the precincts come in, and we have reserve on it, and it did not need reserves, so we still.
We still own it, okay?
So.
So planned B.
Planned B may be a different option, okay? But Stacy Cresswell did the Skid Sphere, we had a twenty thousand dollar reserve on it, and we got twenty thousand, two hundred dollars.
Wow, an extra two hundred?
Sorry, two hundred dollars extra.
Okay. All right, so, we probably need to have a motion to accept the sale, although it's been accepted, I mean, we've sold it. Do we have a motion to accept the sold, the two thousand and eleven?
I'd like to make it second.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor? Any opposed, motion passes five zero. Awesome, thank you Cheryl.
See, you don't need a bottle back, clearly. Good deal.
Discuss, and, item number sixteen, discuss and consider requesting sealed bids for road materials and asphalt products, culverts, tires, tubes, and fuel. Seal bids to be opened Monday, December ninth, twenty twenty-four, at ten A M. Is this a county-wide deal, or is this a precinct?
We annually do this, to get these bids in by the end of the year, and it'll start January first. We also send out some letters, but we also, we run it in the local paper, so that everyone knows.
All right, do we have a motion to request sealed bids? We have a motion from Commissioner Shook, we have a second from Commissioner Rogers, all in favor? Any opposed, motion? You abstain? Motion passes four zero with Commissioner Wiley abstaining. Four zero one. We'll move to item number seventeen, discuss and consider correct procedure for the fuel bid process. Commissioner Cresswell?
I got to talking with them when I was at school down there, whenever, they really emphasized on, we were if we do not take the lowest bid, we need to put a reason why, at least on the receipts, or on what is the exact reason we can't accept the lower bid. If we have problems with fuel not working in machines properly, it needs to be on that receipt when you get that fuel delivered that's more expensive and turned in that way. That way, we don't run into things in the future where people come back, well, we want to see y'all's bid, or bid, and see that, well, why didn't y'all take this, it's a lower bid. We need to, on each one, for the sheriff's department, precincts, anything like that. If we take the higher bid for better fuel, we need to put it on there. We, we get better fuel from this company, and that's why we accepted that bid instead. If not, we can get in trouble for later.
That makes total sense, I mean, we do that, like for court-appointed attorneys, if I deny one, I have to put on there, or I bet I have to, but I've put on there why I'm declining it. So it makes sense, because you're never gonna remember later.
Right, and so it either needs to be on the receipt, or we need to make record of it in court that we can accept bids because of any reason.
We don't need to let us know so we can write, because we don't know, we tell you what the bids are, and then, until we get the invoice, we don't know, do they?
So if I understand correctly, Stacy, Stacy Cresswell's making a motion that he would like to change our fuel bid procedures to where, to where we put an explanation for why we selected the bid that we're selecting.
All, if we do not take the lowest bid, yes.
We don't take the lowest bid, obviously, to take the lowest bid, the explanation is best price.
Right.
What it stands, our policies, the bill, the county, and there's only one bid, and then.
I think we have two.
We have two that are bidding again, yes.
All right, so, do we have a second to Commissioner Cresswell's motion?
I'll second it.
Second from Commissioner Shook, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes four zero one with Commissioner Wiley abstaining. All right, this is my item, discuss and consider canceling the December twenty-third, twenty twenty-four Commissioners Court meeting. So that is a Monday meeting with Christmas on Wednesday. There's a lot of people in the courthouse that kind of would, would take that day off, just for the natural day being up to Christmas. The complication is, we have invoices to pay, and I know you guys approve majority of the invoices that come through. If we decide to cancel that meeting, the request would be that y'all would pop in the week before so that you guys could, you know, notarize. notarize off on on invoices so that we can continue the county business.
At least on Friday.
Yeah. Is there any any discussion or concerns with that?
No, sir.
All right, do we have a motion to cancel the December twenty-third Commissioners Court meeting?
Sure.
Motion from Commissioner Wiley. Do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Shook. All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Item nineteen, discuss and consider the burn restrictions. I, you guys have given me the authority in the past to take us out of a burn ban. I I did not do that on my own. I consult, I have a text group with all of our volunteer fire department chiefs. Jared Cook's on there, Chief Babcock's on there, not Chief Babcock, Chief, well, Chief Moody's on it, Burbak, Chief Burbak, who's Almies, EMC is on there, and then I have the Grand Fire Department on there. And so we we talk every week about whether the ban should be on or off in kind of conditions. And they're the ones that guided me to to take it off with with all the rain that we've had, to let people, if they can burn, let them burn. Is there any concern that we took the burn ban off? Does anyone have any desire to put it back on? No action?
No.
All right. We'll entertain, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion for Commissioner Wiley, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Cresswell. All in favor?
All right.
Five oh, we are.
I have another thing to come up. They didn't want to serve, they were going to be against Dancy, so.
Well, good, so we had.
So we have another option.
That's good.
Aw, thank you.
Hey, what do y'all do with our bio solvents?
Something, I can't have it, Gabe. Put on somebody else's.
Thank you.
You may not have getting them to fertilize my weed with.
No, I think there's, there's a way. He just can't leave it alone, Gabe.
Well, I kind of need some fertilizer, and it's getting high.
Yeah, it just.
Johnson County has a lawsuit going on where they're spreading out the field, and it's killing all animals around that field.
It's making people, that's why people, you, you have to have a certified program.
Boy, let's get a program. I can do some fertilizer down there on the river bottom.
I have money on the concert.
You don't know when to be quiet.
I wanted to take, I'll take around in my, the other thing that I want to.
That's a shame, sir.
Okay, the concerts, you do show, that they're all being sold.
Just people aren't buying tickets.
Thanks again, guys.
Bye. Thank you. Appreciate you. We're going to have a Christmas party at the arena. December twelfth. Thank you.
See, some of the.
Let me double check that.
I don't have the issue because I I go through.
Do it exactly like I.
Because I have smaller storage facilities. But everything has six months' supply in time.
Yeah, the Christmas party's on twelve.
Good, as far as I went there, all I went down was the east. Where my laces are. Yeah, some wash and fluff. Going down that lane. My laces coming from the west. And then a small crown right there. Reason being, little crown, is that down grade. Yeah. Great cross from tail, that's. How do you put it on concrete?
I tell you, if you're smart, then get parked in Little Sister.
Thank you for the rock.
I think they get a lot of tickets.
Get me on my other end considerably.
December fifth, I'm going to have Glenn's retirement party at the shop where he grew up, the Annex one. They've mentioned doing it at the Annex, I'm on Cook Ribs.
What day?
Y'all's guys are, I'd like to see all the, December fifth. And we're going to try to get roadhands and anybody at the courthouse that wants to come in and tell Glenn goodbye. He's been here longer than anybody else, so. Forty-two years with the county.
Wow.
I don't think anybody else is going to wait that for you, but it's a long time.
What's Glenn's last name?
Brockman.
What time do you think he's going to start?
Uh, we'll probably start about eleven and go till about whenever everybody gets there.
Oh, it's a lunch?
Yeah, I'm just going to, I'm going to like a lunch for everybody.
Um, and then what, give me the date again?
December fifth. That will be his last day here with the county. No, he's going to retire then. Oh, he's got vacation. I'm going to have to play. He's actually going to go. He's still got, he's got a retirement from Walmart, too.
What's the, he's got two in his house now?
He's got two retirements plus social security. Is that off yet? There never was on. Well, she says that he is the most experience in retirement she's ever seen. Been here so long.
Yeah.
Because it doubles every seven years.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it can draw like three times what he makes just in county retirement.
Really? So is that, is that, is that, is that, are we in some state system, or is it all in-house?
It's not a state.